You weren't here.
I wasn't here.
You brought mine.
I told you. Thanks, Mike.
All that work I did. Wait for me.
No, I. I wanted to find my pens, I was digging around for it when the meeting started.
Yeah, I don't gotta do that.
We have an extra one if somebody needs one.
Yeah. We'll just wait and ask Mike for one.
Alright, with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Seven o'clock. Uh, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Adgerson.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Hoag.
Mr. Hoag has indicated that he is in traffic and hopes to be here just letting me wait.
Beautiful. Mr. Merlington.
Here.
Ms. Napprowski.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here. He unfortunately don't have Mr. Moore here tonight as a city planner, he's he's out. Ill. And then we have Mr. Womack, city manager, and Ms. Johnson, the city clerk. Well, we have minutes of the regular meeting June seventh to look over and approve here. And I have the wrong thing up on my screen. But I'm sure that they exist.
I'll make a mo- motion that we approve the minutes.
There is something.
Sorry, excuse me.
And I need it.
So, so, just a second, so we have a motion to approve the minutes. Or, or, okay, discussion, Mr. Nixon?
Um, I was not here. And it says I was present, so I wanted to make sure that that was noted. So I'd saw that today and I was like.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I was here and I got me excused, so no big deal.
Yours was wrong too, Jerry?
No, his was right.
His was right, okay.
I amend my emotion.
Are you here?
Who knows?
Was not here.
I was on drugs.
So you'll amend your emotion?
Yes, for the, with.
I do.
Corrections, thank you.
You still have a second? Or, yes. Okay, all in favor of approving the motions as edited, uh, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Tonight's agenda. Everyone has, I think you have it in front of you, or if not, up on your screen. Is there anything we need to change or look at for tonight's agenda, or can we approve it as it is?
Is it possible to add into discussion items? As a. A discussion on the table of contents for the. Different districts.
Mm-hmm.
For us to look into them or have the manager bring back. That, so we can revisit that, possibly clean that up.
Or uses.
Uses.
So under, uh, item eleven for open discussion?
That'd be fine. That would be fine.
Um, should we?
D.
Make that a D on there?
Sure.
Make that eleven D, eleven C is planning commission members comment, do you want to add it to eleven D, we can add it there?
Correct, that would be fine.
So. Then I'll make the motion, unless you have a motion on the floor with that, or is that?
I would, I would make the motion to approve the agenda. As amended.
For.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And, uh, it's approved. Moving on to item six, uh, public comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items, be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns, it's the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. So is there anyone in the room tonight that would like to address the planning commission during public comment? During night, is there anyone online? Seeing none, uh, we'll close the public comments. And we'll move on to item seven, conflicts of interest, next part, communication increase. If any, uh, planning commission members, um, have, uh, believe they have a conflict of interest or affect communications on items that are before us this evening, uh, this is your opportunity to reveal that.
Um, the applicant, uh, Ed Ladwig, and I have a familiar relationship, but it's distant, I feel that I can still make a, um. Decision with clarity without conflict.
Thank you. Anything, it's very rare that we actually have something come up that, Mr. Womack, just want to make sure I'm not missing a step, is there anything else that we need to do other than declare it?
My understanding of, um, planning commission and conflict of interest is specifically regarding whether you're gonna make the profit, uh, of some kind of decision. Obviously, it's very important to know of other potential conflicts of interest, but. I think the law would say that it's up to each individual planning commission member to decide whether they can make a fair and impartial determination on their own, uh, and if they do not feel that they can make that, they should recuse themselves. Ralowski is determined that she should take a fair and impartial judgment.
That's still the case. Then we will move on to, unless there's any others that I've missed, okay? I'll move on to item eight, scheduled public hearings. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled tonight for a special land use for White Creek LLC fourteen one eleven White Creek Avenue Cedar Springs, the applicant seeking special land use approval for a drive-through business. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, um, to this. This business, um, from the public, there's your opportunity to do so, and then after that, we'll have a discussion amongst planning commissions, we may be asking principal members of this to speak again. Uh, at that time, so that's up to you, how you choose to use the time, but if any member of the public would like to speak on this, here's your opportunity to do so, the lecture is yours.
Mr. Conley.
Yes.
Would you formally open the public hearing?
Oh, okay, so, um, the public hearing is open.
Hello, uh, thank you for inviting us here tonight, my name is Mike Murray with Advantage Commercial Real Estate out of Grand Rapids. Um, I'm the real estate agent that has represented, um, the Jimmy John's, uh, franchise in this area for many years. And, um, also have known, uh, the landlord, Ed Ladwig, and Kathy for years and years as well, so, um. Kind of a bunch of us that know each other are trying to put this deal together up here, um. For fourteen years, I lived pretty close to Cedar Springs on twelve mile and Myers Lake, so I'm very familiar with this area, and years ago, I was involved with the Taco Bell and then the Autozone over by the Myers, so. Um, enough about me, moving on, um. As you're all aware, Ed Ladwig, um, who is a resident of Cedar Springs, purchased this White Creek Center in December. And so over the past about seven months, he's addressed, um, a few concerns that, uh, the city had regarding some of the upkeep, the dumpster enclosures. Lights and that sort of thing, and kind of has done what he typically does with his properties, he's gotten his arms around it and made it better. Uh, Jerry Heath, who's sitting here behind me, um, is Jimmy John's franchisee, he currently has sixteen locations throughout the greater Grand Rapids area. Uh, he is also the Hungry Howies franchisees that opened Hungry Howies right down the street here in two thousand and three. And he has about seven to ten of those as well. Um, and he is also the same Jimmy John's franchisee that was involved with, uh, the special use approval for the drive-through. At forty-one seventy-three seventeen mile in front of the former family fair with the different Michael Murray out of New York that was developing that center there. And we'll touch base on why we're not moving forward with that location in a little bit. Um, we're here tonight just to discuss a few points that, um, Williams and Works brought up in their memo when they reviewed our application. Uh, a few of the, a couple of the points they brought up was the special land use standards. Um, in your package, on one D, they talk about a stacking queue, how, you know, our project has about enough stacking for three cars and a typical drive-through restaurant has enough for approximately seven cars. Um, they also talk about specific land use standards, uh, as number four regarding a setback. Uh, the setbacks in highway commercial are forty feet. However, with a drive-through, um, and a, a special use, it's required to have sixty feet, and we're at fifty feet.
Mr. Murray, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, um, the four minutes for your, uh, public, public comment running short.
Okay.
We, um, will definitely be offering you another opportunity to speak.
Okay.
When we, as we dig into this.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure that any members of the public.
I'm sorry.
Had an opportunity to speak for, have a comment before we dig into.
I apologize.
Specifics, so I'm not anyway trying to change what you speak about or anything like that, but I'm starting to understand that maybe we're getting into the meter.
Would you like me to step back and?
That would be great, in case anyone else would like to speak, and then we can close the public hearing and then we continue speaking directly towards your business. It's, it, they do it differently obviously. Anyone else that would like to comment? Yes.
There was a, um, comment that was provided in writing to everybody at the council, if you'd like, I could read it into the record.
Sure.
This is from copies plus Shannon Hager, I am writing this letter to show my support for the special land use for White Creek LLC one four one 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 White Creek Ave. Cedar Springs Michigan four nine three one nine. I believe a drive-through for a business in any situation versus parking and physically entering the building is always a benefit. Especially now when people are trying to avoid unnecessary contact to prevent getting sick. The placement of the drive-through is convenient and it, and is an easy in and out location. I feel this would be a smart addition and a good draw for our city with so many travelers on the highway, thank you for your consideration, Shannon Hager.
Okay. Um. With that, if, if. If there's no other public comment, I want to make sure that we've got that handled first. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Um, and now I'd like to offer the opportunity to Mr. Murray, I just want to make sure I understand, are you representing the, the, the interests of everyone else here?
Right.
Okay, come on back up, I'd hate to give you the runaround here.
No worries.
I didn't want to.
At all.
I didn't want to, if there were other members of the public who want to speak on it and they felt like they were being pushed out, I wanted to give them their opportunity.
Definitely, not a problem at all. Um. So just getting back there, um, the Williams and Works memo mentions the, the setback issue. And then they also talk about, um, section thirty-two, six ninety-three, one D regarding. Any type of use that could be obnoxious detrimental to the public or other people. They also make a note about requesting a waiver, if we miss something there that's, we didn't intend to, um, in the process, um. We've communicated with all the city staff that, you know, please let us know if we screwed up or have done something wrong on the paperwork, um. We're happy to correct that, um. So, just as many of you may or may not know, um. White Creek Cl- Plaza was built twenty years ago. The KFC A and W building was built twenty-two years ago, the Wendy's was also built at the same time twenty years ago, twenty-two years ago. Uh, Mr. Ladwig used the Freedom Information Act to contact state police and just try to dig into any complaints, traffic issues, traffic accident reports. Um, complaint reports, et cetera, and. You know, he's not an expert, I'm not an expert, we can find a history of issues at the center due to traffic or complaints or that sort of, uh, situation. The Kent County Credit Union has been a tenant there since two thousand and eight and utilized that, that drive, drive-up window. Um, one thing you have to keep in mind is they have a dual purpose drive-through there, they have a drive-up window, but then in the front, they also have an ATM. So I'm not a member there, but I've told by other members that, you know, people will be at the drive-through window, and other people will cut in front and use the ATM and leave, so there's a dual purpose. And that dual purpose has been there for almost fifteen years. And again, we couldn't find a lot of issues out there regarding this dual purpose in this situation there. Um. You know, uh, the Cedar Springs zoning and uses. Um, Cedar Springs saw things coming years ago and clustered a lot of these high intensive uses near the highway. Um, to not bring, you know, just highway traffic into the city for, or, you know, just coming and leaving. But White Creek is a secondary street, you know, traffic's not going out onto seven mile directly from White Creek. And then back to the previous Jimmy John's special use permit you approved at forty-one seventy-three seventeen mile. We spent a lot of time on that project, working with that developer, and we got all the way through a lease agreement, and I mean, years and COVID and all kinds of things going on. And at the very end, uh, Jimmy John's corporate and Jerry the franchisee just decided that. The way that drive-through wrapped there directly in front of the center and in front of all that one-way angled parking. It just, it, there was no escape route in that project, and it just. He didn't feel comfortable, and he has, you know, more than half his locations have drive-through, so he's very used to working with them, so. He decided just to back off on that and wait for another opportunity, and then this came up. And both him and Jimmy John's corporate have looked at this and approved it, and they like it better than the other location. Um. Back to your, um, the Williams and Works report. On page two. Um. In the remarks, one D. The Williams Works report mentions that the drive-through window located on the east side of the building, um, only has room for two to three vehicles in the stacking queue. And it could interfere with the parking and the maneuvers in the development. And they go on to say that typically, drive-through facilities for restaurants have several more stacking spaces. Recently, you approved. The new Culvers on White Creek. That building's forty-five hundred square feet, close to probably five thousand square feet. This Jimmy John's is fourteen hundred square feet, so even if that Jimmy, or that Culvers is three times bigger. That's three times the employees, three times the customers, three times the traffic, three times the drive-through lane. So it, they're really different animals, and Culvers, if you know, if you've been there, you order, you wait, and they make your food and they bring it to you, where Jimmy John's, they have their, everybody has headsets on inside. As you're ordering, they're making your food, it's all prepared and ready to go, they don't have to heat anything, they don't have to cool anything, they just grab, make and go. And the Jerry, the Jimmy John's franchisee can share some more detailed statistics, but the Jimmy John's that he has in Rockford at ten mile in a summer situation, and kept of that shopping center. He was looking today at his. Information there, and thirty-eight percent of his sales are in the drive-through. Thirty-eight percent are inside and the rest are all delivery. And he expects something similar here, where Culvers, a McDonald's and such, they don't deliver, you can only either go in or through the drive-through. And they're much different sizes of operations. Um. So to have two to three cars stacking for a Jimmy John's. Works very easily, and they're not worried about backing up into any traffic or parking spots that are right in front of the Jimmy John's. Um, right in front of their door. Um, this property at White Creek has a history for over fifteen years of a double drive-through with the credit union. Um, and we couldn't find any negative feedback from the community or people around there that have businesses that there's a big problem there. And, um. We are working with a fifty-foot setback instead of the sixty-foot setback, as is required as Williams or Works points out. But again, it comes down to, would ten feet make a difference over these past fifteen years, would have changed anybody's use of that area or any of the traffic flow in this project? Um, there's also mention of internal signs showing where, how the drive-through operates, we are totally fine with this, the city's ordinance when it comes to those and installing them. And we are open to suggestions, but we're, you know, Jimmy John's is very comfortable with how this is gonna flow. In summary, we're asking the planning commission for a waiver on the fifty-foot setback. We are also asking, um. We're not sure what we're asking when it comes to the stacking, since the ordinance doesn't specify how many cars need to be stacked in a drive-through lane, it just leaves it open for. It has to be safe basically and not cause a nuisance. And we just lean on the history of this property and the uses that have been there and the lack of complaints or issues. Um, Jerry Heath, the Jimmy John's franchisee, his partners, his employees, and Jimmy John's corporate, they're not gonna put their customers in a detrimental situation. That creates chaos for them, for their employees, for their customers. And this whole area has over twenty years of fast food and a retail center. All just kind of functioning and, and working, so. We're open, we're asking to work with the city and put this together, if you have any questions for either Jerry Heath or Mr. Ladwig, or here to answer them, or myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, normally I would ask Mr. Moore, um, to. I meant at this point, on his report and what the city's position is, but Mr. Womack. I believe you probably also have a good idea of what the city's position is.
Sure, I do.
Um, where, what's, what is the city's position, how about that?
Well, let's start with the beginning, um, we're talking about a restaurant. Generally speaking, a fast food restaurant. Um, and I don't think anybody in this room has any difficulty with a fast food restaurant being located out. As Mr. Murray indicated, it's generally set up for that use, um, and we have multiple types of uses of that type in that area. Um, so I think really what the planning commission should be focusing on is the drive-through. Which is a special land use under the city's ordinances, and it is the applicant's obligation to convince you guys. Uh, that the, their use, their proposed use of the drive-through, um, will be safe, um, and meet the standards we stated in the report. Um, as the planner pointed out in his report, uh, stacking distance is a significant, uh, issue, and just based on, you know, local knowledge. Um, and, you know, architectural and engineering standards for drive-through lanes. Um, he points out that two to three vehicles appears to be the maximum amount that could be stacked. At that location before it starts impinging upon the drive access lanes in that parking lot. Uh, applicants didn't address that issue, um, you know, they, they said a lot about, oh, well, it's fast and, you know, we don't anticipate it to be a problem, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but, you know, I, I heard that their applicant, um, has eighteen, nineteen other locations. Uh, they should have a good idea of how many cars actually do stack, uh, in a drive-through, especially at their peak times. Um, I've been down to the Jimmy John's at ten mile, it's a busy location. They always have more than two to three cars in their, uh, drive-through lane. Um, so I'd like to hear from the applicants, you know, some more information about how many they actually. People stack at that location. Um, and whether they have a good feeling for exactly how many cars can be stacked before it starts impacting the rest of the site. And do they have any other, uh, alternative solutions for what happens when you do have two or three cars and you do impact the rest of the site? I think there's also, uh, some issues with kind of the plan that was proposed. Uh, it's a bit simplistic in comparison to the plans we've received from other drive-throughs. Um, I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, we're talking about a couple of arrows on a site plan. No indication of how big the arrows are gonna be, no indications about, you know, any of the standards of the painting or the signage or anything like that. Um, while, you know, the city has other projects that we've dealt with, um, I don't think it's our job to tell them exactly what signage they should be putting in. We could work with them if they, if we want us to, uh, but not something we normally would do before a project is approved. Um, another thing that concerns me is, you know, they're talking about, well, thirty-eight percent is drive-through, thirty-eight percent is walk-in, thirty-eight percent is delivery. Uh, we've seen nothing suggesting any kind of plan for, uh, where their delivery drivers are gonna be parked at, how many delivery drivers are gonna have. Um, you have the safety of the delivery drivers going from the store to where their car is parked. Um, how those delivery drivers are going to enter, exit the site. Um, I also don't see a, a real plan for, uh, enter into the drive-through lane and then exit. Uh, whether they make the hard left-hand turn to go around the building, whether they're gonna make a right-hand turn to go out on White Creek. Um, anything they're gonna be, going to do to prevent traffic from entering on White Creek. Driveway and causing a traffic, uh, conflict of going south, apart from arrows on the road. Um, so there's a lot of questions that I, I just don't see addressed at this point. I don't know if, um, the board wants to hear from Mr. Moore, uh, his professional opinion on this, uh, whether you want to hear from applicants, uh, you know, a little bit more about the stacking issues, I think that's a significant portion of this. Um, uh, uh, or, you know, the, the site plan that was presented, again, is a little simplistic. We might, uh, want to ask the applicant to submit a more formalized traffic plan. Uh, that would show us the safety of the vehicles going into and out of the site, and also how they prevent the stacking queue from, uh, interfering with the rest of the parking.
I have a question of the applicant. How many employees will be working at this site at one given time?
Come on.
And, and naming all that.
Uh, Jerry Heath, Jimmy John's, uh. Anywhere from, you know, more, three, three people up to ten, possibly twelve at the most, depends on. You know, our, our, our busy time of the day is lunch, obviously, uh, but at the most, I would say probably ten to twelve.
If, and looking at the site existing, the way it's set now. The cars that are parked there, I only see three empty parking spaces, other than your, your employees. Where would their designated parking be?
Just anywhere in the parking lot, we're just, we're, you know, same as any other employee that's working in the mall, they would just, you know, park, it's a pretty good sized lot out front.
Yeah, I know it's pretty busy, I go there quite a bit. So, and, and I visited, uh. Other Jimmy Johns and, and they're, they're quite fast, don't get me wrong, but I've also seen the one that I visit quite a bit. There's usually three to four cars, sometimes more in the stacking. And I see here, stacking is an issue. My concern.
You know, we, we are fairly fast, obviously, making sandwiches and getting people through the line, um, during COVID, when our lobbies were shut down. Stacking, any drive-through stacking, got a little out of control, I'm sure in some cases, um. We, we, we don't have a pro, we have a store in Genesee that has a drive-through that does wrap around the front. Uh, right around the front where the parking is, and they have very limited parking, and they're, you know, they stack two or three max there. I'm not gonna say they, not max, but a normal situation, once in a while, it might go a little more than that, but in most cases. Um, like Mike mentioned, we're, you know, they're ordering their sandwich and we're making it as they're ordering, they pull up. If they didn't have to pay, they would be grabbing their sandwich and just driving, so it would be a constant flow, so we are, you know, we try to keep it moving as fast as we can.
Yeah, I, I.
Pretty good job.
Big Rapids is the one I refer to, and then I do patronize the one in Greenville, and that's a more strictly a walk-in, there's no drive-through.
Mm-hmm.
They're pretty fast in there too, and they're in a very small, compact mall like you are here. Thank you.
Do, um, your other locations of the drive-through have those open lanes there? That you have to, your drive-through go through, or is it a strictly a drive-through? That's part of our issue here is those open. The openings in the parking lot?
Okay, the Genesee, the Genesee one is very kind of slumbered to that, where their, their parking is right out front.
Mm-hmm.
They kind of drive through the, to get to the drive-through, and we have, we've had no fender benders, no accidents that we know of, um. When I think of any of them, parking right out, you know, Rockford has parking right there, but their drive-through wraps around the side, they had a lot of extra land, so they were able to wrap a drive-through lane around the side of the building. Um. Sure. I mean, they're all a little different, but some of them do have similar situations to that, I'm sure.
Um, I think so.
I was curious, uh, the, the actual drive-through location on that suite, that's like in the center of the building, correct?
I think it's right around the middle.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
I just didn't know if you guys have ever thought about having that at the back of the building? Not the back of the building, but the northern point of that corner to give more room.
We could move it back some, but most of our prep and our, you know, any other restaurant you go to, fast food, everything's up front, everything in the back is normally storage or prep. We can, they can do that, it's been done before, it's not ideal for us.
Cause I was just curious, I mean, cause it, really, the, the way it looks, if there's three cars. You know, that, the exit location for the parking lot is gonna be blocked. You know, that's, it's gonna, if there's cars parked in front of your store location, and there's cars there and they gotta back out to go to the east. They're backing right into the cars that are in line. I mean, that's the big concern that I'd have, is that it's gonna be blocking the exit of that parking lot.
It's definitely a possibility, we could, I could talk to the construction department at Jimmy John's and see how far back we could move that and. Maybe add a, you know, another car or two possibly.
I I just feel like if you end up blocking one or possibly two. Of the exits to that lot. What can people do to get out of the lot, you know?
You, I don't think they'll be blocking the exit onto White.
No, not on White Creek, but the exit out of the lot. Just if cars are pulled up into the front of the strip mall. And if that's blocked, they're going to have to back up and turn. And if there's cars directly right there, I don't know if they could. If especially probably lot one and two, if they had to back out to go the other way, is there room for them to back out and get out?
Or a shop and.
Yeah, well, Jimmy Johns.
So one of my biggest things is. When we looked at. Businesses like this and I'm going to reference the business, um. The other location, that was what Sky meant. We looked at, um. There was the, um. The whole, uh, driveway, there was. Uh, traffic flow patterns, there was all this stuff that was accounted for. Traffic flow had been looked at and everything, and it hasn't been here. Now stacking, I'm not even going to bring that right now, what I'm looking at is. You've already got one business in the back. That does a drive through. Now you're going to have other business, uh, your vehicles are going to have to wrap around the building to get out. Because if they try to pull out onto White Creek, that is a double lane. And you've got people who come straight down there. All the time to go to Big B. And then we're going to have problems with collisions right there where somebody's not paying attention, they're just going to pull and go that way, or if they pull and go this way. And you're going to have problems, and so. Has there been any studies, anything to figure out?
Well, there's been a drive through there for fifteen years, and as far as we can tell, there hasn't been any issues. I know there there are signs for Big B out by the main road directing them to that far north entrance, so they won't even be accessing. The side of the building, they'll, there's one at the, at both entrances, I believe, it says Big B drive through that way, so I think that deters a lot of people from pulling in there.
Big B hasn't been there for fifteen years, but what I'm saying is now we throw in another drive through. Now we're going. You're going to have to funnel them around the building completely around. To keep people, because that is a drive through. Next to the bank, that is a drive through where you can. Drive through and go around the back. And also drive through and exit if you have to. If you're coming out from the parking lot, a lot of times you can't get out. The south parking lot that. Adjoins with, uh, KFC because it's too packed, so you have to drive through here, well, now if you're doing that. And you've got stacked up at that window and you've got people trying to go this way and come this way and do that. Now you've got problems that way. So now you're trying to have people go around the building. But then now we've got to have dual lane around the building. And that's really tight back there for a dual lane around that building. Very tight. Because. You're parking back there. You've got parking back there, you've got all that stuff, and that's kind of tight back there.
I I just, I don't see. Personally, with my experience in in parking lot, you know, the seat, the the hungry Howie's here and that little corner lot. That's a tiny little parking lot, and with the restaurant when that was busy and we were there. You know, any any parking lot, it just seems like there's always cars coming and going, backing out. And people just need, you know, most people are courteous and let people go, um. I don't see, I mean, the amount of time I've been up there, I don't see that many people shooting through the area you're talking about. And if they do, you know, see they see someone pulling out, just like they're pulling up, leaving the bank. They would wait for them to make their turn and then they would continue on, I mean, I. I'm not that concerned about it, I don't, I don't really see it being that big of an issue personally.
Any other question? Um, it it, Mr. Heath, it's Mr. Heath, right? Um, how many? How much stacking space do you have at Rockford?
Rockford, uh, you could probably stack twenty cars around that loop, it's a big. We added a parking lot and a large loop around there, not twenty, but, uh. Behind the speaker or from behind. Right, probably fifteen cars. I'd imagine, it's a big area over there.
All right, um, and then my other concern was, um. You have numbers for what you're doing at Rockford for, or at least we heard numbers of. Or, I'm sorry, it may not have been specifically at Rockford, it's just, uh, throughout your entire franchise. Correct me if I'm wrong, about a certain number of percent delivery, a certain number of percent, um. Walk in and certain, uh, percent through the drive through. I'm curious if any attempt has been made to forecast the kind of business that you're going to have here on Friday nights. When all of Grand Rapids is leaving and stopping in Cedar Springs to pick up. Pick up food and pick up gas on the way out of town. Um, because. It's hard for me to imagine, um, in those circumstances, only having two or three people in your backup, in your in your stacking lane. And we have to have a plan for what's going to happen. At its busiest. So I'm curious if there's any kind of. Forecast on what kind of expectations we could be looking at during what happens here every Friday in the summer.
Well, I I chose my Rockford store just because it's a similar sized town, it is farther from the expressway, but we do, you know, with the baseball fields down there, we get a lot of traffic. Coming from the expressway or the ball fields, um, it's a one of my busier nighttime stores, but. Busier nighttime store is not. It's not crazy, it's just busier, because we're lunch, you know, mostly lunch normally at a normal store. They are busy, right, you know, I've got average numbers. Um, in Rockford on a on a Friday per hour. You know, at dinner time, and it was through the, through this is through the drive through, this was June tw- I think that's Friday. The twenty fourth, I believe is a Friday. But, you know, they did. At the beginning of dinner, dinner, they had twelve cars through the drive through one hour, then fourteen, then thirteen, then five, then ten. So, you know, at their busiest during the day, they had twenty five, twenty four, fifteen. So it's, it's still not as busy as daytime. Saturday when there's ball tournaments going on, and some tournaments happen during the week, but same type of numbers on the on a Saturday or even a Sunday. The daytime numbers slow down. But the nighttime look like they're pretty comparable, but on an average. That store has a hundred and fifty cars through their drive through in a day. That's a twelve, they open at ten, they close at ten, so it's twelve hours, so it's. Twelve, thirteen cars, uh, per hour average through their drive through.
We have about an average of twenty thousand cars a day down that road.
So one of the ironic things is, you know, we use Parcel Viewer for so many things in this, you know, and I'm looking at the KFC to the immediate south, and they have. Seven cars stacked. Which, of course, I don't know what it is. Um, and then the Wendy's has five cars stacked. One thing I haven't heard anyone here say yet is what the anticipated maximum, I guess. Average would be for number of cars stacked during a busy time of day, which we're anticipating would be a lunch rush.
That's what I was getting ready to ask, what is your, during your busiest time at lunch, how many cars do you think are at Rockford in queue?
An- anywhere from one to. Three or four. I mean, a lot of people show up at one time. Um, a normal situation, there's just two or three. I mean, they move, it's not like going to a. Wendy's or it's it's a lot of lot quicker, you know.
Yeah, we get that.
First, uh, my apologies for being late, I was second kind of, I don't know if you got my email. Um, I was curious if Jimmy Johns has a minimum required stacking space when you guys set up a restaurant, is there a minimum required?
That I'm aware of.
You know, because I was going with Mr. Conley, asking what the expectation is, you know, I work in Holland and Grand Rapids and. I go to the Alpine one, and then, uh, the one on, uh, Plainfield, and at lunchtime, that thing can be. A lot of cars, obviously bigger area, but. I mean, my concern would be blocking those drives and without a valid. You know, plan here that actually lets us see. What the traffic would look like at its worst, because that's what we're really here to look at, we understand one or two, fine, right, we're not worried about that, we're worried about. That run slush rush or people especially heading north. I know head north up on a Friday in the summers. Can be crazy in this town, is you get somebody there and ten fifteen cars, something we block on those. And I think that's what we're looking at. I'm honestly not that comfortable unless we have some sort of traffic plan that would actually let us see. What that would look like, I mean, if it alleviates my fears of saying it's not going to block the drives, right? But I think that's really our biggest concern is taking a look at this and saying, all right, we'll just block the flow in this area, if it's not. Fantastic, if it is, then I think that's when we need to have a conversation about what that looks like, right?
That's that's my sticking point, but Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Nixon had it, and I'll go to you.
Mike, uh, do we have, um. The parking requirement. Adding on for this business?
Yeah, so normally speaking, when we have a big development with lots of parking spaces, you know. I don't want to say we look the other way, but we kind of accept the fact there's a lot of parking spaces and one individual business is not going to take all the parking. I think my concern with the application material was. Okay, they're trying to diminish the number of cars that are going through the drive through by saying, well, we've got lots of deliveries instead. Well, we haven't heard where, how many delivery drivers, where they're going to park at. And. Apron doesn't know this, but we just went through this in the same exact place. Uh, where another business proposed a delivery system. Uh, and they have their delivery drivers going across an inactive drive through. So we haven't seen a plan for where their drivers are going to park at. How many they're going to take up and how they're going to get their, you know, sixteen seventeen year old kids. Across a parking lot without getting run over.
Yeah, and I think that we're looking at this. Okay, it was a bank and it had a drive through. Now you want to put a restaurant, the drive through is going to be different, okay, they've they've got different things, so. I think what. Was trying to be done is just to have. The drive through be the drive through and not show anything different, okay, so we're looking for a little more. Of a plan. That's two grade. That will show us. Where the lanes are going. Uh, where the speaker is, what, how wide the lanes are. Where each car in each lane is going to go at the end, you know, with your plan, how it's going to go around the. The back, how it's going to go around the existing drive through, how, um, you're going to take care of the. The problem if there is a lot of stacking, where these openings are for this lot, I mean. Is there a way to change the parking, you know, where things can be more flow flowy? So I think that it, we don't really have enough of a plan to look at. So that that's kind of where we're at, we're we're kind of like trying to figure out, and it's not really our job to say, hey, could you do this here? Hey, could you do that there? We're just looking for something that's going to give us a little more idea that it's going to be a little bit safer and a little bit more. The flow is going to go better. That's that's kind of what we're looking for. I think, don't you guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
We want to make sure it's safe for everybody and the flow is right, and and we have to look at every single business. We want every business to be successful, obviously, right, but as I said, flow is the biggest thing there, I'm sure we're not blocking that that exit to those two spots, so.
Yes.
I have one question, where's your delivery going to be?
Delivery?
Delivery.
The drivers, where do they come and go?
Oh, your supply.
Back door, front door, whatever, wherever they can get, usually here first, you know, early in the morning.
Yeah.
See where's that, and then dumpster, of course.
There's already an existing one there.
We would be shared in the back. Shared in the back.
Yep. And we we, in regards to our drivers, our our drivers will be parking in the lot just as the Jets drivers will be. They have to be eighteen years old to drive, so we don't have sixteen seventeen year olds running around, they're a little bit older, usually a little more responsible, but. Just like any other of our stores, they just park in the parking lot and come and go out the front door.
They they don't go out the back door like the Jets drivers do?
Our ours, for safety reasons, we go out the front door.
Right, okay.
One more thing, I'm sorry. We still have the problem. At that back. Where the Big B driveway is, where people are parking up up against that building. And so now we're going to have two people, you know, two cars trying to go through there. And they're still parking, like the flower shop lady pulls up there to to load her car. The Jets guys pull up there and park to get their stuff. I mean, it's supposed to be taken care of, they're not supposed to be doing that, and that's what that parking along the back was supposed to help take care of. But they're still doing that. So just so that you're aware of that also, um, so that's part of the issue also.
Of course, Mr. Heath, you weren't here for any of this, you you don't know that, this has been, uh. What what we thought we were getting when Biggies went in there, or we, honestly, I was here at the time, what we were told we were getting, it's not actually. It didn't come about the way that we were told during the meeting, so there's a little bit of a. Of a second guessing at this point, and I apologize if that comes towards you in any way, but we need to make sure that we have this right before we move forward. Mr. Murray, did you have something you wanted to add?
Couple clarifying questions of. Of kind of what's been requested for us to prepare and and bring back, and I want to address Mr. Nixon and Mr. Murlington's. Some of their comments as well, um. So when we look at this plan again, and, you know, we weren't trying to diminish and and say we're only a delivery place to try to. Fool you into thinking this drive through, nobody's ever going to use it. I do, besides the Jimmy Johns, like the autos, I do all Chick-fil-A's work in Michigan, and when they come to a planning commission, I mean, they have PowerPoints, they have three D images and all kinds of stuff. How their drive through is going to function, because if you've ever been there. Yeah, it's it's chaos, it's organized chaos at times, this and that. And so just us, after all these years of doing these Jimmy Johns, we just, we don't, we understand the drive through has to function, but. To the extent of like a Chick-fil-A, I mean, it's just not in the in the same world, and with Chick-fil-A, you have traffic studies and all that, all this, because they're all brand new out of the ground, you really don't know how it's going to function, so you need a traffic engineer to. To see what the future is going to look like based on traffic in the area. All this has been around for over twenty years here, you guys, you know how this thing operates, I mean. We've heard from the credit union, sometimes there's more than ten cars stacked to get through there, and again, we've never heard of an issue. Because of that, people figured out, but we're willing to put more work into this. And and help you understand the flow. You know, based upon, we went through the ordinance, we talked to city staff and said, if we're missing something, please let us know, because. It's kind of a shot in the dark, you know, we could have thrown all kinds of stuff at you, I mean, obviously, we got more work to do, we appreciate your feedback. And it, just to clarify, you want to see. Where the cars are going to stack if there's more than three. You'd like to see where the menu board is located. You want to see where the delivery driver, I mean, do we have to show where deliveries drivers are going to park, or is the statement of they going in out the front door enough?
It should be delineated, we should, we, it should be on a plan somewhere so that later, if that process changes, we can say, no, you said they were going to be here.
Okay, okay.
So basically, the way the business is going to operate, the agreements that we're coming up with here, they need to be reflected on something, some kind of document, preferably the plan. So that we, so that we can, we can hold, I'm sorry, we have to hold some.
How do, how do we tie the the delivery driver's plan into the special use permit of the of the pickup window, because if we weren't doing a pickup window. We, there's no plan for where the delivery drivers park, I just don't want to mix two things together.
Well, that's because it kind of goes in with. It could be in the way of the drive through, it could be in that, that's that's why we're asking.
I think we're just talking about, like, if you had a map here and you delineated that here's where our delivery drivers are going to park.
But I mean, the park, maybe they can't park, they park in a parking spot with that striped, right? I mean, that we're, I mean, are you talking about we're creating another parking lot for them?
We just wanted, we just wanted to ensure, if you're saying that, oh, they won't be in any way a part of any problems in the back of the of the building.
Out of the, okay.
You're designating, here's where our employees park, and they're not there.
Gotcha.
And that can be simple and drawn on the map.
Yep, yep.
The concern was the people going back and forth over that with another delivery spot.
Like, Mr. Lightwood took a picture today, a huge charter bus pulled up and parked in between the KFC and his Plaza. And he talked to the driver and he says, it's our normal stop, we come here, we're heading to the casino, people hop out, go grab food all the way, they get in and they leave. And as far as we know, everybody's done that safely all these years, so we'll put. We're happy to put some more details down and come back. And see what we can do.
Yeah, um, and again, I I think you're right on it when you're talking about, um, stacking, the traffic flow, like it's anticipated, like. We see some of this with the arrows here, but coming in and out of the parking lot in all the various locations.
Where they're wrapped by the Big B and such.
And if you are expanding your stacking area, how does that impact the traffic flow? And are, will there be any other elements added to the existing parking lot to make it clear? Here's where people need to drive, and here's where they not don't need to drive, depending on what their intent is.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
And one of the things. And one of the things with the traffic flow study is what I was looking at was, I know you keep saying that. This has been here for twenty years, yes, the bank has been there, but the bank is different than Jimmy John's. Yes, it was slower, Jimmy John's will be faster, so if we go from having the slow. There to where, okay, now everybody's used to how that works, now it's quicker. Now we've got, okay, now it's quicker, now people aren't looking at, oh, they're just pulling in and pulling out real quick. Now we may have problems, so that's why I'm saying, and um also like Mr. Jerry was saying, figuring out. Um, that the eighteen wheelers can make that turn back there uh for delivery.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I was.
Just go.
Just wondering maybe too, I'll jump in real quick, but that. The drive between the building and White Creek where it's two-way right now, should that be one-way going north? So you don't have cars?
Whether delineated here, is that what the intent?
We have, we have enough room for three lanes of traffic there, there's plenty of rooms to have. You know, the drive thru, another car heading north, and then other cars heading south.
So that would be opposing traffic on, on a twenty-four foot wide. It's delineated on the map here that the, you have a twelve foot map, a twelve foot drive thru and then twenty-four feet of other.
Yes.
So. I don't know the exact amount that it need to be, but. It's thirty-six total, but, okay. I would suggest um that you uh take what we've done here, uh, work with the manager, he knows exactly how it needs to be presented. Or uh, I don't know when Mr. Moore is gonna be back, because obviously he had things in his.
He'll be back soon. I'm saying he survived the surgery.
That's, that's good to know.
It's obviously serious surgery, so he had hoped to be here at the next meeting. I don't know when he'll be able to start working again, but obviously the goal is to get this the final product.
Right.
He has to approve.
Well.
We'll go back, we'll spend some time with your comments on our plan, and then we'll come meet with Mr. Womack. And get his thoughts on those revisions before we come in back in front of you, does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely.
Sounds well.
Alright, thank you.
Did you have a question, Mr. Le- uh, make sure I had your name right?
Well, I guess I do.
Yep.
I guess I just have one question is, I, I, my name's Ed Leidwitz, I'm a property owner. On June first, I dropped off the application. I asked the city staff if there's anything we need to do, please tell me, please tell me. I came back three weeks later, I said, is there anything we need to do? Now we're here today, now we gotta make all these different changes, so.
Many of those changes were delineated in the, in the report for the city planner, did you not receive the city planner's report?
No.
Um.
I, I did not re- I, last email I received from the city was on May seventeenth. I, I received nothing on my email, this reading though. Um, I, I personally came in person. On June first, handed them a check, sat down with them, or excuse me, with uh Deborah D. Group. And then I came back three weeks later and I was at the counter and I asked um Rebecca Johnson. Is there anything you need?
Believe it's the city clerk's job to make determinations for the planning commission, these things have to come through the planning commission before decisions are made. So the city planner, the city manager are the people that you would make, that you would have those conversations with.
But if the city manager had, had questions or how, how we presented it, couldn't he have?
I'm, I, I've been made privy to many emails that have been going back and forth between you and the city manager.
Not after May seventeenth, I've had zero, I can prove it to you.
Okay. Okay, so, would you like us to? I'm not sure what, uh, what remedy I'm looking for, say something right there, this moment.
What, what am I looking for? A, a little bit better communication on the city side, because I dropped it off, paid for it. Came back in, in person, is there anything that we can help you to get your approval? So this doesn't keep going on for another month or two months, I saw, I asked him, you know. I couldn't call you people, I couldn't call anybody here, I was told not to call anybody, I was told do not call anybody.
First of all.
They ask questions.
Okay, you can't talk to us in that situation, because then, as we, as we established in the beginning, there's an ex parte communication thing.
Correct.
We should not be making separate deals with applicants outside of.
I'm not making no deals, I'm just asking questions.
You should not be in that situation, the city manager and the city planner are the people you need to talk to. Okay? I guess.
This was a point of clarification, I did inform Mr. Leidwitz that he needed to speak with the city manager and the city planner regarding that issue.
Okay, I moved the table.
Well, second.
You, you might, you need more, I didn't actually finish taking it before I got seconded.
That you tabled?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Good, we're gone. Better left unsaid some kind of stuff. Item nine is site plan reviews, of which there are no, uh, there are none. Item ten, other business. Uh, review and discuss proposed industrial building facade requirements.
Sometimes um, not my boss, but I sometimes put these in your agenda simply as a placeholder, so that next month. You know, when I actually do have more information, it's something you define. Also, so that you guys have a reference, if you wanna on your own, continue to work on it. Um, unfortunately, I just didn't have any time this month and obviously Mr. Moore was called up another issue. Both of these issues were kinda put in there as a placeholder this one.
Okay, um, item eleven, correspondence, um, or A is correspondence, there's the twenty twenty-two calendar. Which I'm assuming Mr. Johnson is the same as we always have in here. Uh, item two, the White Creek Flats parking justification letter, I believe we got that.
Previous, previous meeting, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, I think we've seen this before, and then item three, approved fifty-four North Park Cavalry Assembly zoning permit.
That was subsequent to your recommendation of the city council that you changed law and then reaffirmed it up.
Oh, so, okay, so they approved it and we're good.
Yeah, sometimes I just wanna make sure you guys have access.
Thank you.
Staff comment, city manager?
Uh, I will reserve my comments.
I do not have anything.
Okay, uh, planning commission members.
I, I wish we should have asked how many Jimmy Johns he owns that doesn't have a drive thru.
It looks like we're another crack at it. Think. Where you speak? But Mr., are you asking to be recognized, Mr. Nixon or not?
No, no, I was, I was, that was, that was, that wasn't him, I was like, whoa.
I, your body was turned away from me and I missed it.
Sorry.
Your gesture, I'm sorry.
We were waiting for misaction.
Did you have the?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
The city council?
The city council or?
Oh, oh, okay, I'm still on, I am still on uh. Oh, because actually there's an item D that we have to, we have to go over before we can go to the.
I'm enjoying, um, I'm enjoying being back on the planning commission. I might stay just a little while, we'll see.
Okay. Then, uh, item D, we added this on the table of uses. Um, Mr. Womack, you, you brought to me a couple items here. That we might wanna look at in the future regarding uh some things that are allowed in the highway commercial and the industrial.
Yeah, so, um, this is something that I've been concerned with since Mr. Johnson was here. As you guys will recall, I can't remember when we did this, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, but we basically went through the, I think it was the two thousand nine version of the table uses. We added some things, we, you know, uh, scratched some things, but by and large, it's similar to the two thousand nine version. Um, yeah, there are just some things in there that I wonder why they're still there. Um, but in this instance, it was a member of the community who asked, why do we have this still in there? Um, so I thought it might be best to thank you guys to uh consider in the near future going over again. Um, obviously, we want to perfect our ordinances to the best of our ability. They job month to month, uh, making sure that businesses that come in fit the, the needs of the community. And I just think maybe it's. No, if no objections, uh, maybe I'll put that on, in addition to your, in addition to your parking requirement.
Park it somewhere.
Well, it's another, another issue to address. In our ordinance, so in the future, we don't have another instance like. Jimmy Johns trying to shoehorn this into a parcel, well, it says you can. You know, but even though we know it won't.
Mr. Hallford, what it's worth, uh, while I agree there are certain problems with the presented state plan. What I'm talking about are things like.
Yes.
Uh, nuclear power plants.
Well, and there, there's.
Like, yeah, state in our community.
What?
Well, there's other things in the, in the ordinance, there's the table of uses, and it's like. I don't think we really need them in our ordinances. You know, if you know what I mean, if you go through that, and then it, some of the stuff just doesn't fit in those areas. In my opinion. Well, I'm not gonna name out anything in particular, but I think it's just time to, to bring that table up to two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, um, as long as, on a related subject, um. Where, when we need to start work on the new master plan?
Uh, when we're budgeted for it.
Okay.
Um. I, I don't remember if we budgeted. Uh, do you remember if we budgeted for this budget here or is that?
I do not recall, but I believe it was the following, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, part of what we planned to do was the recreational.
An enemy first.
Ash year, and I thought we planned on doing the master plan this coming year, but I don't remember seeing it. It'll definitely be by next year. Um, and you're right, it's sorely needed.
The theme being, you know, some of these things that we're talking about here that may or may not make sense in certain zones.
Right.
The, the honest truth is, this town, city, is not the same place it was ten years ago.
No.
And so that's reflected in perhaps some updates we need to do here in this table of uses, but it's also gonna be reflected in the master plan.
Absolutely, and, and the, the table of uses will go hand in hand with the new updated master plan. And what's allowed.
Don't mean to cast it to discursions or anything, but the current master plan was put together by LSL Planning.
Correct.
Who was working with permanent TV at the time.
There was issues.
I don't know if it was done very well to begin with, um, and frankly, I agree, I think it's a ten year old plan.
Yes.
Uh, it's actually that old, but it feels like it's that old, um, and I think the city is.
We were there.
It could be.
We're there, we're old.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and.
Yes.
And I think the city has gone in a wildly different direction than where you were.
Yeah.
We, we, I've, yes, the, the person that draw that up. I think this, this master plan we have in place now is probably twenty years old, I think they did change the picture. So, moving on.
Regardless of the need, regardless of the reason why, the need is apparent, and I'm glad to hear that, it, you know, it's somewhere in the future. Not that I need more work. Okay, um, report the city council representative.
Um, well, all the work that is done on the planning um commission helps us as a um council. Have standards and things to follow, so it's very, very um. Great when, when you guys work on those issues, or we, I should say now. Work on, work on ordinances and issues and we can, we can have something to fall back. We're finding things that um in the past haven't been taken care of. So, this is very helpful when we get these things on the books and all these ordinances done, to be able to fall back on them. And um, help us with our decisions, so it's very, very, the, the work this body does is very important. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your thing. Uh, I reported clinic consultant, he's an appear this evening, so I think that takes us to item fourteen, the favorite one, German, or German.
No, you were in the bathroom when we were talking.
Yeah, that was.